Tuesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty one Winchester Planning Board Meeting. Uh, we are being recorded this evening. Uh, and I hope we are streaming live on Windcam to our fans out in Winchesterland. So, uh, tonight we have with us, uh, Keating Scott, uh, Sally Dale. Uh, or those are two planning board members, town planner Brian De Kelly. Uh, our recording secretary Nancy Potari and me, Diop Darius, who is the chair. Uh, we are missing Heather Hannan, who is playing cookie tonight on vacation somewhere, hopefully nice and warm. So, uh, I think we will start with, uh, updates, Brian.
Sure, so, um, a few updates, so, um. Since our last meeting, the six fifty four Main Street, uh, decision has been appealed, there'll be more information coming. Um, I have not had the chance to look at the appeal yet, it just came in. Or we knew that the appeal came in, but then the actual appeal just showed up, um, at People's Doors today. Um, both the planning board and the developer are named in, in the appeal. Um, what else, um, six A, six B Webster that was just before us, um, and was back before the ZBA was subsequently denied. Um, so it's unclear what they're gonna do, but if I had to guess, I would imagine they would probably go to a by right option after going to the ZBA twice. Um, but I actually have no idea what they're going to do, but that's my guess. Um, one property that has been, um, cooking in the past couple of days. Um, thanks to a number of people, both in the Historical Commission as well as on this board, was about three Indian Hills. And this, 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 uh, structure that really kind of seems like a substantial demolition. Um, and the, uh, the Winchester Historical Commission is investigating how this, how this structure was demolished. Or, um, whether it was a full demolition or substantial demolition. If you look at the pictures of, of the before and after, it's certainly two different structures. Um, the Shared Streets Grant is now, we're working with, um, Mahonies to finalize the landscaping, uh, for all the restaurants. Um, and they've been really, um, helpful in trying to figure out the best way for us, uh, to get the right types of landscaping materials for each restaurant. Um, you know, some need more sun, some need certain heights, like there's, there, it's not just kind of like a one size fits all, and they've been super helpful. Um, so those are all the updates I have for the moment.
Okay, uh, the only thing that, does anyone else have an update before I jump in? Nope, okay, uh, I've been, uh, as you probably know from our last meeting, the, uh, Network for Social Justice. Winchester Housing Partnership Board and the Planning Board are co-sponsoring, uh, two fora on, uh, housing equity in Winchester. And, uh, it's going to be a blockbuster forum, I hope, and I have been working with them on that. Um, one of the interesting things is there's a great website, uh, which actually gives you all the redlining map that are available, they're scanned. And a lot of the note cards that went along with those are available, so you can go and read. How the assessors rank different categories of, um, locations, it's, it's an eye-opening, um, read. Unfortunately, the notes for Winchester are not available, they don't, they may have been lost, they just don't know what happened to them. So we will not have, we don't have access to them. But what is interesting is if you look at the, the different zones that were given to Winchester, and you look at the current zoning map that we have some eighty years later. They look remarkably the same, so it's, it's interesting how things don't change. Um, so why don't we move on to, um, Lock Street Closeout? We are actually ahead of time.
Uh, sure, um, I'll give, uh, the, um, you guys all have my memo, um, about, uh, about the closeout for Lock Street and where we are. I can summarize that pretty quickly. Um, I see the town engineer is here, I also see that, uh, the Di Martinos are here as well as a few neighbors, um, chair. So, um, I think I'll go first and then turn it back to you to see if you want to, um, hear from the engineer or the applicant at that time.
Okay.
Um, so, um, the applicant is requesting a full closeout of the, uh, the three hundred and nine thousand dollars, which is the full amount of the bond. Um, based upon their completion of, of the subdivision. Um, all the paperwork has been completed, uh, to the, to the satisfaction of both engineering and the planning department. Um, the improvements have been exposed to one complete winter without damage. However, the trees were planted in November of twenty twenty, and we require a full calendar year. So based upon that, we require a five percent holdback, um, to be withheld until a full calendar year, uh, for that landscape to make sure that they have survived. So, um, we can revisit this and fully release the remaining five percent, but my recommendation at this point is that all the work has been completed to the satisfaction of all parties involved. Um, and then once we inspect the vegetation later, uh, this year in November, we could potentially, uh, release the remaining fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty. Um, the only other thing to mention here is that the applicants decided to per- perform all of the work as part of the subdivision, um, without asking for periodic release of the bond. So I'm asking for a release of more than fifty percent, um, it's, it's kind of a weird thing in our regulations, the thing that no partial release shall reduce the security by more than fifty percent. But in this case, um, all the work is done and we're satisfied. Um, the board is clearly allowed to waive this regulation if it's in the best interest, um, of the neighborhood or, um, the town. Um, so those were my, uh, recommended votes based upon that is to, um, waive this more than half of the security to be released because all the work has been performed. And then it was to do a holdback of five percent, um, until we get, um, a full year of vegetation in the ground. The only other thing I'll say right now is that, um, I do have the pictures that Sally sent. Sally, thank you for sending those pictures around, those were great, I'm really glad that you did that. Um, there was also, um, um, a, a memo from the applicant, um, explaining some of the, um, issues that, that you brought up. So that's, um, that should, you should all have that, and I also have that in this packet. Um, so that goes back, uh, back to you, Diab.
Okay, um, so for, for everyone who is listening, um, Sally, why don't you really quickly describe the, the, um. The, you, there was, uh, something with the wall that you noticed, and then there was a response from the applicant. Do we have those pictures, Brian, just so everyone sees what?
It says, everyone, can everyone view these, uh, they're looking at pictures, no, yeah, okay, all right, I'm just gonna, um, Sally, you just direct me, I'm just gonna go forward, uh, and I'll meet here.
I, I think it's fine if you just sort of like, just slowly flip through them. Um, I think that what I had had expressed to me was that the wall was, I, I think that people had not understood, the person was speaking, he had not understood that the wall would be. Artificial stone, i.e., you know, cast concrete, um, that the impression was that it would be natural stone. I was not on the planning board at the time, and I don't have the drawings right in front of me, so that's something that I would turn to Diab and Brian as having been around at the time. Um, I would say that it seems very tall to me, and I read the letter from the Di Martinos, and I understand completely. Why they did what they had to do, given the ledge and, um, uh, the costs of, of, um, taking out that ledge and, and making the wall structurally sound. Um, given all the ledge and the need for planting, so I, I personally don't think it's a great looking wall, it sort of looks like something you would see on ninety-five. Um, and I don't mean to be offensive in saying that it just, it doesn't look as, as soft and kind as you would want to see in a neighborhood. I'm really happy about the ivy, I think that's great, um, because I know, because we have ivy on our land, it will take over. Um, and over the years, you'll just hedge it, and you won't even see the wall. So, um, I, I wanted to raise it because it had been raised to me, um, but I understand that the letter that you wrote, um, seemed to be a, a good explanation. Um, and it also meant a lot to me that when I did stop by to speak to the neighbors there, the Westlands, that they, they, they were, they were fine with it, and it faces right into their house. It doesn't face into my house, um, so I think that the people who are immediate abudders, um, should be heard and honored. That's it.
Thank you, um, so the, uh, for those in the viewing area, so there was a, um. The, the developers have, have written a response to this wall, there, this wall is apparently supposed to be different, but they ran into a lot of ledge, which should not be surprised to anyone from New England. And that changed how they were able to put the wall together. Um, so I think the next thing I would like to do is to see if there are any neighbors who are on the call who are interested in commenting.
So, uh, my name is Majid Dadgar and.
Hold on, wait, hold on one second, please, we are going to, if you are interested in, we first have to figure out who's there, sorry. So, uh, Brian, can you, um, have you, have you gotten names for everyone, usually we go through that?
I, uh, at the moment, I only, I only see two, two neighbors, um, the gentleman who just spoke, and then Joyce Westner, I don't see any other neighbors on the call.
Okay, Joyce, um, or whoever's on the Joyce Westner line, are you interested in speaking?
Um, yes, I'll be happy to speak, I'm sitting here in the dark, so you can't see me, but.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we, um, why don't we start with the person who started first? If you, um, I just want to see whether you wanted to say anything, Joyce.
Yep.
So if, um, why don't we go to the first person, if you could please identify, uh, who you are and where you live.
My name is Majid Dadgar, this is my wife, Michelle de Blazi, and, um, we're actually residents at the thirty-sixth Dunster Lane address, and, um, we just wanted to comment on how. You know, incredibly happy we are with the work that Mike's done and with how the wall looks and everything, um, so, uh, we, we really couldn't be happier, so we're very pleased with how things turned out.
Yeah, and I think the look of the wall is, is beautiful, um, and we don't have any issues with it, and I think someone commented about the ivy, and I think that will make it much more of a natural look. Um, which should go grow pretty quickly, is my understanding, so we're very happy with it.
Okay, so it's actually your wall, is, is what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, um, thank you, um, Joyce, if you want to go ahead, please?
Yes, you know, we're, we do look out the window at this wall, and it is quite a surprise every day, but so are the two houses, and we're very happy to have our new neighbors. And we look forward to having other new neighbors, and the street is absolutely terrific. I think Mike and Toby have done a remarkable job with this and what it, what it used to look like, and we actually ended up with a little extra. Property because of the way the street used to be, so we're very pleased, and the wall, you know, it's a wall, and it's gonna have some nice vegetation.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Um, and, uh, I wanna, Beth Rudolph is on, isn't she, I don't, I, I can't see who's on, unfortunately, something's going on here.
Yeah, I'm here, thank you, Diab.
Beth, did you want to comment on anything?
No, I, um, you know, I reviewed everything, and we met with Brian last week, and we're comfortable moving forward with the release, um, as outlined in Brian's letter, thank you.
Okay. Um, does the board need to hear anything from the developer, or are we ready to go?
Try to understand what, um.
Can't hear you.
We can't? Anybody else?
No, wait, we can hear.
Oh, it's just me then, my apologies.
Can you hear me now, Diab?
Yep.
Okay, so the developer, I, my emails are all over the place, um, for this meeting, so I'm curious to why, as to why there was a, uh. So who is doing the complaint about the wall, if the neighbors are happy with it?
Yeah, so it wasn't, uh, I guess, a complaint, Sally noticed that it was, there was differences because it was going to be a two-tiered, um, situation. And then they ran into the, a number of issues on site, uh, which happens, and, and, um. Uh, through the engineering department, we, we okayed it, but I guess there was not, there was not a neighborhood, uh, issue. Um, Sally noticed something that was, uh, true, that it wasn't, yeah.
And, and what I would say is, um, that it does, it's, it's tall, but I understand what happened in this, in, you know, when you get into the. You know, bones of a project, literally the ledge, um, you find unexpected circumstances. Um, the only thing I was thinking that I would have thought that the planning board would have asked for it to be a natural stone wall, not, um, an artificial stone wall. But I wasn't there, I think natural stone walls are much more part of the vocabulary of the town. Um, I don't see a lot of these very large precast concrete retaining walls in town. I'm not sure that I really like the look, but that's what the ivy will help with, and so I don't want to, you know, make a, a, a big kerfuffle about this. I just don't think it's as pretty as it might have been, but it's okay, it's, it, I don't want to over.
I, I mean, I, I appreciate that, um, bring that up, because I actually live across the wall exactly like that in some ways, and, um, it, it's very disruptive to me. But, um, I'm glad to hear that the neighbors, um, are fine with theirs, um, and I agree, like, a stone wall would be more, way more beautiful. But I remember sort of pursuing that with the wall in front of me, and it, there's a, it's, it's really tough to have a design guideline for that. Um, when people have as a right to build however tall. And I don't know if you can, you can specify materiality, except for the fact that this is, um, a subdivision.
It's really, it's, it's a by right thing, I think we can, we can't really say use this for that material. Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, it's, it's my right, so, yeah.
Um, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't believe we can, we can do that, but.
We can certainly make suggestions, but.
Well, I think it, it, I think it comes to do with heights, heights of walls and, and, and other things like that, but, um.
So, yeah, yeah, so, um, so.
Yeah, e- either way, there, um, the implementation of what was there is, is, um, you know, everyone feels comfortable with the work that was performed there in the, in the end.
Um, so does the board need to hear from the developer, or is the board ready to make a decision?
Hmm, I'd be ready, I think.
Okay. So, um, according to our current rules, I can't make a motion, so someone could, uh, if you want to make a motion, uh, I think the language Brian has in front of us right now is appropriate. Um, oh, I should ask, um, Brian has, uh, I, I would like to ask the developer, are they okay with the five percent?
Yes.
With that, it's fine, yep.
Okay, okay, cool, just, uh, keep things moving, so if someone would like to make a motion to you.
Um, I make a motion to, um. Waive eight point four point three C to allow for more than half of the security to be released as all of the work associated with subdivision has been completed to the satisfaction of the engineering and planning department.
Okay, is there a second?
It has to be, it has to be you, Sally.
It has to be me, well, I don't mind seconding, I'm, I'm, yes, I, I said.
Okay, roll call, vote, please, um, Keating?
Uh, yay, Nick, yay, sorry, yay.
Sally?
Yes.
Uh, Darius, yes, we have three, zero, one with, um, Ann in absent. And then, uh, if someone would like to make the second motion, please?
I can make that, that I move that we vote to release two hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from the bond that was established on June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Due to all the work being completed with only fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars remaining from the original three hundred and nine thousand dollars. In order to account for any vegetation that does not survive the year.
I second that motion.
Excellent, uh, roll call vote, um, Sally, please?
I.
Keating?
I.
And Darius, I, we have three, zero, one, and it's still being absent. Uh, so thank you all very much, I would like to thank the developers, I think this was a remarkably, at least from our point of view, smooth thing going through. Um, we have obviously not had such luck with other subdivision closeouts. And if the neighbors are happy, then I think we're happy, and it sounds like you got along well with the town of Arlington, get all of your sewage done, so, uh, that's great, thank you much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in November.
Yeah.
I'll make sure I water those trees, Joyce, you're up.
Okey dokey.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Um, good night, so right now, um, do we have Josh with us? We're a little early for the North Main Street study.
Yes, Josh is here.
Hi, Josh, uh, okay, sorry, I was, I was expecting Brian to say something, but that's okay. So, um, do you have anything, were you going to, uh, carry a stream or something like that, or we, or Brian, were you gonna?
So I have the PDF, Josh, but it probably is easier if, um, or up to you, but I think it'd be easier if you, if I made you a co-host, and you can.
Yeah, that would, that would be great, I, I have a little bit of a modified presentation from what I sent to the board previously.
Perfect, um, all right. Um, you should be good to go.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone, good to see you all again. Thank you for taking a little bit of time on your agenda this evening for a, oops, sorry, I didn't want to share that one. Well, no, it's fine, I'll share this. The, uh, an update from the, uh, North Main Street Study, sorry, can you all? All right, there you go, can you see that? No, you cannot see that.
Looks, looks very black to me.
It's, it's, it's just pure black.
It's a little thin white line.
All right, let me try again. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so this is, uh, an update, just a brief update on where, uh, the progress for the North Main Street Study, um, and a review of the successful, uh, community meeting which we hosted with you all in March. So let me just get through this, so the, um, the community meeting is our focus, but I did want to give a brief update on our current work and progress. And then talk, uh, briefly, I, I think my real mission tonight is to discuss a date for a second community meeting, which would take place in the, towards the end of May, middle to end of May. If we could talk about that at the end, but this was, uh, the community meeting which occurred on March thirtieth, uh, I thought was very successful, I know that some of you were there. Uh, we had about sixty-eight, uh, in-meeting Zoom participants, uh, we also hosted a poll, um, which was online poll through Qualtrics. Uh, for people who could not attend the meeting in person, we had nine post-meeting poll participants, uh, so that totals out to about seventy-seven participants, which I think is a, is a good amount. Um, and we've also been doing stakeholder interviews in addition to that outreach, and so far have, uh, six such interviews on our belt, under our belt, we hope to get more, we've got another round of invitations out presently. Um, but the good news about those six interviews which we have completed is there, they do represent a good collection of property owners, and those property owners are geographically distributed. On the north, south, and sort of central of the North Main Street corridor. So a little bit about who, who participated in the meeting and what their, uh, feedback was like. Um, a good mix of people who identify in different ways in terms of their relationship to the North Main Street corridor. The most frequent, uh, response was people who are resident on an abutting street. But it also include just more generally residents of the town, and more specifically residents of North Main Street itself. And then also a good collection of business and property owners, which I think is very important for this study, then we had town meeting members, uh, town board committee or staff. Uh, and some who are identified as something other than what we listed. The most important aspect of North Main Street from those who participated in the meeting and participated in the poll was that it supports small businesses and economic activity. Uh, and then second to that was the variety of activities that work well together on North Main Street, and then the quality and variety of businesses and services. So a lot about the types of businesses and services that are there on Main Street, and making sure that the North Main Street environment, uh, really does support those businesses moving forward, uh, with future investments. I think this was an important question to ask, just to gauge, uh, in terms of the zoning recommendations and other recommendations, where, how far away from the ideal vision people think the corridor is today? I think this is telling that the, it was pretty strong majority, sixty-eight percent thought that the, the corridor today is not close to what they think it's, uh, sort of ideal, idealized version of what North Main Street could be. Um, and that it could stand to benefit from substantial changes was the way we phrased it, so, um, that gives us an indication of sort of the order, order of magnitude of the types of changes we might consider. Um, then the next close, the next, uh, largest share was that it was close but could still stand to benefit from some improvement. Then we had a few answers that were even worse than not close, that it's not close at all, and it's a major transformation. So, so getting at, uh, what, what kind of transformation that might be, a, a lot of people thought that there could be safer walking and biking conditions in the corridor. More, which would include more street trees and landscaping, uh, then also harkening back to the importance of the small businesses and services, that there could be more of those, uh, and more housing. Then new investment or generally, and additional guidance for that new investment. And all, I should mention on that slide too, protection for historic buildings shows up there as well. So what would you like to see more of on Main Street? Um, the mixed use with residential and business uses together in a structure was the, uh, leading response combined with small outdoor spaces. That may be integrated with some new investments, then you can see restaurants were, were pretty closely following behind those. And what uses would you like to see less of on North Main Street, people were, uh, pretty well in agreement that. And what uses would you like to see less of on North Main Street? People were, uh, pretty well in agreement that the auto services, repair and fuel type uses which are, uh, you know, there's a few of those types of services in the corridor today. Uh, they, uh, would potentially like to see less of that, or maybe at least not more of it in the future. But we did have some comments about the existing businesses being, being strong, strong services and strong employers as well. So this is important considering how, uh, the regulatory environment might be adjusted, uh, as a result of this study. We asked about the appropriate height for new buildings on Main, on North Main Street. Uh, most people were thinking that two to three stories is the most appropriate height, which is both reflects the current context of the corridor and three stories is the maximum height limit today. Uh, the, the next, uh, most popular answer was three to four stories, which would represent uh, an increase from what the current zoning height limitation is. And also density. So what density is, uh, appropriate for North Main Street? Uh, the biggest response was more density than there is today, which I think is, is a sort of consistent response with the, the desire to see some change in some new investment. So likely that those changes would be accompanied by more density. So just a little bit about, uh, the work that we have underway and that we're preparing to sort of take the analysis and the recommendations to the next level and then share those at the uh, May Community Forum, which would be the second and, uh, last community forum of this process. So we're, uh, looking in more detail at a few, uh, a collection of properties uh, along North Main Street, which we think are representative. Just in these five blocks, you can see there's some different color coatings. And those color coatings are representative of typologies in the corridor. So a, uh, older home, which is used as a residence today, that's one, one type that shows up in a number of properties on the corridor. An older home which is used as a commercial property today, that's another type. Um, or a, uh, single-story commercial property, for example, is another typology. So you see those represented here, which effectively are the block from nine-ten North Main Street down to nine forty-two. And we're looking at those existing conditions, uh, relative to the current zoning regulations. So you can see in that box on the right of your screen now, the current zoning buildable envelope, which is represented by the setbacks, the maximum height and the current FAR requirements. So these are a sort of very simplified visual and spatial diagramming of what's allowed by zoning today. Of course, you, you would uh, with parking requirements and other, other requirements, you're not going to be able to completely maximize those square rectangles which we've drawn there, but that's really what you can effectively build within on North Main Street today. So what we're in the process of doing is analyzing, um, some chain, what the impact of several changes would be in terms of that buildable zoning envelope, thinking about, uh, appropriate densities, how height uh, could potentially be adjusted, but given the feedback that we heard, we, we're not looking at too closely at height in terms of being dramatically different from what it is today. Um, but this is, the other thing you'll notice in the diagram is that the height in feet is actually accurately depicted. So even though the height limitation today is a three-story limitation, the height as measured by feet is, is quite larger than some of the existing structures which you see, which are relatively accurately modeled in those diagrams. So that's, that's why you see some of, I think maybe people are, have been with some of the past and more recent, uh, investments have been a little shocked at the scale of, of what could happen, maybe because of those, uh, height differences in terms of feet. So we're, we're looking at all these things, sort of pushing and pulling and prodding at them, uh, comparing them back to the data and feedback that we have from the, the meetings and from the focus interviews. Um, and, and we'll be putting forward, not, not concrete recommendations yet, but we'll be coming forward in the May, um, session with, uh, recommendations that we're getting additional feedback on before we really kind of sharpen our pencil and make them final. So with that in mind, I'm, I'm happy to answer other questions, but I know that you guys have a packed agenda this evening. So um, I wanted to just get to these next steps. So really the, the thing that I'd like to discuss briefly is when might be an appropriate time from your calendar as a board to think about a second community meeting later in May where we could present some of the information I just presented to you all, but then focus on, uh, the draft vision as we see it and the potential recommendations that we'd be gathering additional feedback on. And then so between now and then, we're basically continuing with that analysis so we can feel um, good about the recommendations and continuing with, um, the next round of those uh, stakeholder interviews. I have one tomorrow lined up, which Yolanda was helping me get, get on, uh, so get all the different stakeholders set up for that. And then, um, beyond the meeting in May, I think either another meeting in May with, with your board or, uh, at least to check in with the planning board in June, I think would also be appropriate. So happy to answer questions or, or hear any of your thoughts about what, if you've heard other things from the community that would be good for us to learn, uh, that'd be great too.
Uh, yeah, we can't hear you, dear.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I have too many hardware switches to turn off my mic today. So, um, I was, I, thank you, Josh. That was fascinating. Um, I will hold off my questions until after we schedule since, um, I think that's really important. Um, I do not, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we have meetings scheduled for May yet, or am I wrong?
Yes, you, you're wrong.
For the first time, okay.
So, um, at our last meeting, we decided we are going to go on an every other week schedule, starting on May eleventh. So that's gonna, it's gonna, and we're doing that May, June, July, and then we don't, then we are not scheduled more than that. So at the moment, we're going every other week. People really did not want to meet every week. So that was, so then, so that's kind of the schedule that we're starting for the next, for the, for the three months after town meeting. So it's, it's crazy with town meeting with the twenty-sixth, the twenty-ninth, the third and maybe more. Oh, we're gonna do a regular start on the eleventh, so I'm thinking May twenty-fifth.
So this would essentially be, so this public forum will probably be Josh, maybe an hour, hour and a half?
It would be about an hour and a half, similar to last.
Okay, so this would actually take, that would mean we would have only one meeting.
One and a half, yeah, one and a half meetings in, in May, correct.
Um, to do planning board business.
Well, we can decide to add another one, but we can at least set this date.
Yeah, yeah.
So why don't we, yeah, so why don't we do that?
So is that okay with, with the rest of the board?
So I, I, I hate to throw a wrench into that, but it actually looks like on my calendar, I have another meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, that is definitely.
So then, well, so then that, would you, would you have a, what if we went into the, the next one in June, which is, looks like, um, what is that?
Eight.
Yeah. Yep, June eighth. And is that, is that getting too late, Josh?
I, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think there, um, there's not an urgency in terms of the work from our end. I just, I know that you all wanted to have some conclusions in regard to North Main Street in case you wanted to take things to the fall town meeting. Um, but I thi- I think we still have time to do that.
We do. I think the only thing was trying not to have, um, events um, during the summer, I think, as opposed to last summer, I think this summer is going to be more typical summer in Winchester where people kind of empty out. So the idea of, um, but now I guess that doesn't matter as much anymore. Everyone can just zoom in. So maybe it's unclear, but the, the idea is that usually public meetings are very hard in the summertime um, for having big, large community events because nobody's there. Um, but, but if we're gonna have it in the, uh, first half of June, it's fine, because no, there's no doubt people are.
I mean, the flip side is we could have, yeah, we could have it in, uh, on May eleventh. Or is there, I mean, that would be the other, the other meeting in.
We, we could do, we, you mean to have our first meeting, May eleventh, just be at the May eleventh instead of the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, that's.
I think May, May eleventh seems a little soon to me, just because we haven't started promoting it yet.
Okay, well then, uh, I guess June eighth is.
June eighth, then.
Everybody else okay?
Does that, does that work with every, yeah, with everybody?
Okay, so we, well, June eighth at, um, seven thirty. I believe that's when we started last time.
And, and do you have a question about this? So what we're talking about, is this a public meeting for people to hear the M A P C's responses and then respond, or, 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 you know, uh, observations or results, whatever, and then respond to those with further input? Okay.
Correct, yeah. The, we, we don't have the exact agenda figured out just yet, but the, the idea would be, it'd be, it's be structured very similar to the first community meeting where we would have a brief presentation which is, um, interactive, either with Zoom polls or other features. Uh, the other thing we might do in the second meeting is have some small group discussions, which are sometimes productive to have breakout discussions. So we would, it would be, um, interactive, but we would basically be, uh, running the program.
Right.
And if you were to have, uh, breakout discussions with, would there be moderators for each of those groups?
Yes, yeah, we would, we would set that up if, if we decided that. I don't, I'm not sure that, that's what we've done, but that's, um, we have had success just in terms of getting more, more people to contribute and have more voices in the room that way. But we'll see, it, it depends a little bit on the, the design of the exercises and what kind of feedback we want to. So we'll, we'll have to figure that all a little bit more.
Okay. Um, so now that we have the scheduling out of the way, I think it's um, time to open up to the board if they have any questions. We have until eight twenty-five, so since we are way ahead of schedule, we have, uh, a little over ten minutes to, uh, have, ask questions. And if everyone could take three minutes max, then we might have around for two.
Can I go?
Sure.
So, um, one thing I want to say about the first public community meeting that we had is I thought that it was constraining to only give people a chance in each point in the little exercises to choose one thing and not perhaps rank the top three or four or five choices, or put them in some kind of descending order of importance to them, because lots and lots of the choices that were presented at each question juncture were really important, but to choose one over the others was almost to negate the others, and I didn't want to do that. So I would um, put on the table as suggestion that we change that particular mechanism to allow people to do a weighted ranking um, or a ranked order of, of, of what they care about. Um, I also think that one of the really interesting things about North Main Street is that there are some interesting historic homes and people don't necessarily know that they're historic. Partly because, um, the people that have owned, owned them over the years haven't, um, necessarily had the money to keep them up looking historic. So they put more contemporary siding on them. Some of their original historic details might have gotten obscured or removed. Um, and celebrating the history of the housing on North Main Street is something that I would like to see come more to the fore, and I believe that it would have come more to the fore in the dialogue if we had had that, you know, descending order of what's important. Um, also, um, I'm really happy that the huge community support is for two to three-story buildings. Um, and, um, I'm also happy that there's a willingness to see more density up there. I am not clear in my mind, and this is an urban planning, um, you know, sort of academic understanding on my part about how you calculate density and what is the impact of setbacks and density and parking restrictions on the whole life experience of a corridor. So I just, I think, and I might not be the only one, because you saw a lot of people said, I want the setbacks bigger, I want the setback smaller, I want more parking, I want less parking. I want, um, more density, I want less density. And I think it's because people have studied those factors, understand more the impact of those decisions on how it feels to walk and bike and live and drive on those streets based on those decisions. So I think there's more sort of explaining and, and teaching to do for the community to understand what would be good choices. Um, I particularly feel very strongly that the side street intersections, um, need to be very carefully engineered for visibility and safety on the sidewalks and for cars pulling in and off Main Street. Um, and that the crosswalks should be, um, better marked, there should be more of them. They should have, you know, whatever is the latest and greatest best practice for flashing signs or whatever, there's some flashing signs in the lower end of North Main Street that work well. There's just a huge safety issue in the whole corridor. Um, and then this question of height in feet versus height in stories is something that I would really like to see graphically explained in documents, because I know that as buildings have gotten more recent architecture, they pump up ceiling heights and they pump out room dimensions. And buildings look out of scale. Like I said the other day, it's parking an Escalade next to a Volkswagen Bug. They're both cars, but they're completely different scale. So understanding the difference between building height and story height, I think is something, and we should document it and diagram it with actual buildings all up and down Main Street. And then, um, the other thing I would say is that I would like to make sure that the other advisory committees in town, um, are allowed a chance to weigh in. Um, we have, um, I don't know if the Conservation Commission, for instance, has, um, a, I don't want to say standing, but if there's any conservation issues on North Main Street. But certainly there's Historic Commission, there's the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee. There's the handicap or the accessibility, what do we call it? The accessibility?
Accessibility.
Just ability access.
I'll sell your engine for its four minutes.
Okay, then I'm done. That was my last point. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, thank you.
Good.
Did you get all that, Josh?
I have, I, I muted myself because I was taking diligent notes and I didn't want my typing to get in the way, so. Thank you, Sally. Do, I don't know if you, I, I did take the list down. I, I don't know if there was something you want me to address specifically, but did you want me to address all the points or, or?
No, I think I'd like to hear what Echeng and, and Diab have to say, and then perhaps you can respond with your synthesis of those remarks.
Okay.
Okay, I, um, because I've come in a little bit late to this, I'm trying to grapple with like the, the big picture view of what this study is and what, who it's speaking to. Um, how, its lifespan as, as things go on, say, you know, five years in and somebody comes with a development. What, how is this study going to be related to what we're talking about here? And I, I'm just trying to grapple with what those questions are so that we can be more, um, effective in the next meeting um, with the community and to get them to wait, sign in on it so that we can in five years say, we, we did this and you guys weighed in on it and that was the decision and, you know, a little bit of like, just like referring back so that we have strength to keep going. I, I just don't want this study or this community meeting to be, you know, everybody sort of tossing out ideas. Um, and then it disappearing and has no, um, it's not a tool for us to continue. So I'm, I'm just trying to grapple with what the big picture, um, purpose of this is and, um, it's, if I understand it, then I, I think I would know how to, what questions to ask and how to push this study to be way more effective.
Yeah, my, my apologies. I, I, I should have given a little bit more context. I, I did not do that. I just dove right in. Um, but the, um, the idea is that the, the Winchester Master Plan established uh, many strategies, uh, among which North Main Street in a, a specific planning study looking at North Main Street was identified as a need, uh, and specifically to, uh, study the corridor to define zoning recommendations and design guidelines, public realm improvements. So this, this is, this study is a result of that planning effort. Um, and we are, well, somewhere around maybe the midpoint of our work. Um, and basically going through a series of analyses, um, and conversations with the community to zero in on those things I just described. Um, and we, I, we did give a much more detailed context to the community in the first community meeting, so they, they got a better feel for uh, how this study was positioned. And, and it's a great idea to do that again in the next study and to, or in the next community meeting and to make sure that we, we say, your feedback is important because we're going to do these things from your feedback in the next, you know, those, these are what the recommendations are.
Right.
Yeah, from, from, if I may just say briefly, from a planning board perspective, this is a follow-on from, uh, a plan that was put out each twenty-five years, the Triangle Master Plan, which was several decades ago, which looked at, um, not just North Main Street. not just North Main Street, but also various regions where I think it's North Main Street, Swanton, it goes up as or is it Washington? So there's this big triangle like thing and it talked about all sorts of things within the triangle. It was really a remarkable document. And what followed on from there was establishment of some overlay zones, the Village Center Overlay Districts at a couple of places along the Main Street corridor, and the idea was to try to bring about more development. And it has not seen a lot of fruition. I'm already talking too long. So this, we're just trying to figure out what is it that we need to do to jumpstart appropriate.
So it's gonna be a tool to push it along.
Yeah.
And just like a open ended.
It's it's, you know, what kind of zoning would would help us bring in different types of things that we want there? What are the obstacles that people see? I know that there was the one business, a couple of business owners spoke up at the first meeting and talked about things. So it's really, you know, why, what can we do to move things along in a in a better direction? So I just had a couple of kind of specific questions of you, Josh. And then we can cycle back and and hopefully there'll be plenty of time. No, not really. Talk to Sally's points. One is that the stakeholders that you've talked to spoken with so far, excuse me, are business owners or property owners? And I was wondering if you had, for instance, town meeting members or who have other stakeholders on your list?
Yeah, so the the ones that we've connected with so far are primarily property owners and and business owners. In some, in many cases, they're bus they are property owners who are business owners. They're one of the same. The we have reached out to town meeting members and and sent more general emails to the Design Review Board and the Historic Commission members. We have not gotten as much traction with those members now. So that's what we're doing a second round now of invitations to try to get some of those lined up again. And I have actually speaking with Sally in one of those interviews. I have a very good list now with emails associated with them of members to one of your points, Sally, of other boards. So the I think the Conservation Commission's represented, the Design Review Board is represented. There are many members, the Traffic or the Transportation Advisory Committee and others. So those are those are all people who have we have reached out to in this second round, and I think we're starting to now see responses through that. I I don't, I think Yolando used Survey Monkey or something to that. We're getting responses back when people are available to make those connections. So yes, so we'll we'll continue on that phone.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we we get some of the people living off of Main Street involved in that. The other thing that I noticed in the survey results, and maybe I got it backwards. But I one of the slides I thought said people were not in favor of putting in multi unit housing. And yet several slides later, they said they were in favor of higher density. Did I get that wrong?
I don't. Yeah, I think that if I recall correctly, mixed use, which includes multi unit, multi family housing above presumably a different type of use was well supported, but I I think I do think we had multifamily as a separate use item and it was less well supported. But then density, I it's unclear because we said we didn't qualify it specifically as residential density, but just more more stuff in general, whether it be commercial or other uses. So people are in in support of that increase in density. But yeah, there might be a little bit of a clarification perhaps that we'll need to make in the second meeting as we're exploring these recommendations in more detail to understand where where that sensitivity lies between what people do support. Yes. So thank you, Brian, for bringing that up.
Yeah, I mean, I think when people see the word multifamily, they're thinking I don't know how big they think they are, but they might be thinking very large structures. And so I think it's maybe coming with more concrete. If we're going to go around another round, concrete examples of you know, fourteen unit structure would be something people might feel more comfortable with than thirty five or fifty units. So it's a yeah.
Yeah, because if you see that these are separate things. It's it's not obvious that mixed use is multifamily, but it seems like people don't want only multifamily, meaning that if there is going to be multifamily in there, it should be mixed use. I I I think that's what I that's what I'm picking up from 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 these two things from we don't want residential only is what it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a challenge there because there's only I I don't know how mu how how much commercial how many empty. We don't want lots of empty storefronts on that North Main because you know, if we if we need to have one on each you in each lot, then we may be challenged. But in any case, those are my two questions. And then if you wanted to circle back, I'm afraid I've left you with very little time. You wanted to address any more of Sally's.
Yeah, I I I would maybe just summarize looking back at Sally's my notes of Sally's points here that the I think what the next meeting we will be very focused on through a series of diagrams, examples and other things. You know, what exactly are we talking about when we talk about height? What exactly are we talking about? We talk about density? And then getting that additional more detailed feedback from the community. I think that I agree with you about the side street intersections and pedestrian safety, having a way to balance the ability to potentially densify in the corridor while not provide, you know, obstructing sight lines and making it even more dangerous for pedestrians or bicyclists. I think that would be an important balance. So I I would guess from what I'm seeing in terms of the results so far on the discussions we've had is that really in our in my perspective so far, it is all about balance. So it's about balancing the desire for some new investment with the desire for historic preservation, the balance of the current character of the corridor with with, you know, what might come next or what what the new investment looks like and the balance of having it be in some ways sort of a an important automobile corridor that is also safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and that 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 is rebalanced in such a way that pedestrians and bicyclists feel more prioritized. So it I think finding that balance is the tough part, and that's that's what we'll be trying to get a get a firmer grasp on with the analyses, the diagrams, and then the feedback that we're able to gather at the next discussion.
And do you would I be right that coming out of all of this process, you know, moving through June and through Zoom meetings over the summer, people zooming in from their away places, that we would come to a consensus on specific zoning recommendations that we would bring to Fall Town Meeting?
The hope is that we would get stuff to Fall Town Meeting.
Okay.
We we're also along with that, we're we're hoping to get some design guidelines like what we have in the Center Business District. And I'm not quite sure if we are getting that from you folks, Josh, or we're going through another consultant for that. I not sure of the details on that at the moment.
Right.
I did have a question. Josh, do you do you need anything from us? Do you need us to to get more? Are you happy with the level of public input you've gotten? Do you need something else? Are are you happy with the progress that the study is making at the moment?
I I feel like we have a very strong foundation that I feel like right now we have enough that we can work from. But what I would like, if if each of you have specific stakeholders that you think we really should be in touch with to give them a nudge to i if if they've, in many cases, they probably have sitting in their email box inbox a message from us or a poll from us about when we'd like when they could speak with us. But if you could just encourage some of your colleagues in the town to speak with us, even even if we haven't reached reached out to them to have them reach out to us, that would be fantastic. And we will make that happen.
Yeah, I I live within like three houses of a bunch of town precinct eight town meeting members, so I can go and give them some polite requests.
Yep. I think it's really important. This is a big next major initiative in Winchester and to have it be as publicized as an an inclusive and that we not only include people and give them an opportunity to give input, but we listen to the input. It's really important.
Agreed. And we will. The other thing that I'll I'll be asking of you all is now that we have a date for the next community forum, we'll create a flyer as we did for the first one. And we'll get that put together so that we can all we'll we'll do our part, Yolando and myself, trying to get the word out, but then we'll we'll do the same thing. And I know Sally, you were instrumental in really getting the word out for the last meeting. So a similar effort would be fantastic and doing what you just said, Sally, to get make sure that it's as widely known as as possible.
It was fun to what do you call it? Pound the pavement of North Main Street. I met a lot of people.
Do we? Do we owe you a new pair of shoes?
I know. They're good.
I would love to see more people outside of Main Street too, just.
Well, that's that's really important. The the abutting streets are incredibly important. And D I have you mentioned that you can is that mostly precinct eight, all the side streets that go down?
There's a big chunk of precinct eight. There's precinct two as well, coming off on the other side of me.
I mean, even other people, I think that, you know, like Main Street, you know, out of those two precincts, you know, people, people.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's we we are actually a little beyond time here, but what is what is interesting is is looking at the response that the rest of town gave when we had the Housing Production Plan meetings and the Master Plan as to where they saw development in town and how that balances with what the neighbors along Main Street think they are appropriate. And they're a little bit at odds. Most people prefer not to have it in their neighborhood, so Main Street seems to be a good place. So anyway, thank you very much, Josh, and we look forward to hearing from you with your flyer and seeing you again on June eighth.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for the time.
Excellent. Thank you much.
Yes.
So now we're off to planning board goals and objectives and this is part of this is part of the agenda where we had really hoped where Brian and I, I should say, I and Brian, I'll take the blame, forgot that Heather Hanon wasn't going to be here this evening. And that is really a discussion that I think we really want her in on. So I think we can start the discussion. And then or does the board want to just hold off on that until Heather is back with us?
I can see us going like really off tangent and a lot of directions, so I I would hold off on it. I would want to do that.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that, Sally.
Well, the one thought I have is that your town meeting report touches on some of our goals and objectives and maybe just as a way. So will we have a chance to review this with Heather before town meeting?
Oh, the town meeting report?
Yeah, the one that you did.
No, because to be honest, I I thought I would have it recorded before this meeting. And life didn't happen that way. So
Your life is like that.
Yeah, so I don't think we I need to record it. I'm planning on having recording it on Thursday. So this is pretty much the only time we can discuss it. So
The reason I mention it is because it kind of is an opportunity for us to at least tell the town what our goals and objectives are, at least preliminarily based on what we know now. And then to continue to talk about it when we have Heather, the benefit of Heather's input and keep rolling.
Right. So you may notice that our agenda only calls for ten minutes for town meeting articles because we had not planned on having this before us tonight. So what I might suggest is that we pick up the Protocol for Inclusion of Minority Report, give that a good discussion and then put as much time into town meeting articles as we need to discuss the one that Brian will be presenting on the curb cuts as and then go into detail on this one. I think Brian's is pretty straightforward. Mine can have edits. So if that's okay with the board, then we'll just put off our formal discussion of goals and objectives.
Yeah, if you don't mind, very very quickly. So yeah, I definitely think that makes sense that we should focus on. There's actually three things that we need to focus on for for town meeting articles. One is the report article, Article Two. And then the curb cut by law, Article Three. And then we also need to decide what articles we may speak on as a board. We don't need to just Yeah, so so that that is and that you should also be putting in your calendars that we are meeting at seven o'clock on the night of town meeting before town meeting. So town meeting starts at seven thirty, but the planning board will be meeting at seven o'clock on April twenty sixth. I'll send those Zoom outs and they'll be they'll be in the planning board calendar as usual. So I think we should go straight to the articles. And in that report article, when we talk about some goals and objectives, we can talk about it then. But I think we should, I think we should go straight to those town meeting articles. Because I think that's the bulk of it, D I.
Oh, you want to skip over Protocol for Inclusion of Minority Report?
I mean, we can we can. I think that's a quick one. So yeah, we can certainly talk about that. But in terms of yeah, it turns out we're actually going to need more time for those town meeting articles and less time for Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Yeah, I think that we with Heather absent, and I know that she has some strong opinions on the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
So then I guess quick for related to this Protocol for the Inclusion of Minority Report for recommendations to Z B A and other entities. Basically, what we had done in the past is that if there was ever a four one vote that there wouldn't necessarily be a minority report, but a planning board member can always write whatever they, you know, they always have the right to to write anything they would want to the Z B A. However, when there's a full split, a three two, which is what we could consider a split vote, what we've done in the past was was typically the two that were dissenting would would write their own not a decision, obviously, the decision is three two, but they would write their minority report. We never formalized that. That's kind of the way it's always been. And I don't know who else who would like to, if you guys have any other ideas, but D I was like, well, how do we do this in the past? This is this is how we've done it, and it hasn't been written down. We can do it in a different way, but this is what seems to be makes sense because four one is not necessarily a split vote, but three two is is clearly there's there's some potential issues there.
Yeah, and to be honest, I've been on the board, I think, five years now or something like that. I don't ever recall us voting three two and putting out a minority report.
It's in my time in seven years, I believe we've put out maybe two or three.
Yeah.
So it doesn't happen very often.
But it certainly it certainly in in my experience has happened where someone felt strongly enough that they wanted to have their opinion in the report to the Z B A. And there was strong discussion around that because it was something that we had no policy for. And it was, you know, it came up in the heat of discussion, which is never a good time to make the call. So
Is the proposal that you would have? It would automatically be a minority report if it's a three two vote. And it would be at the discretion of the single minority dissenter to write their own report if they felt they wanted to, if there was a four one vote. Is that what you're saying? Because that's fine. I mean.
That's that would be my suggestion because it you know, I don't know if you had a chance to read the memo I wrote talking about the the pros and cons. I mean, we really want to provide, in my opinion, we want to provide the Z B A with a clear idea of where the board is. And if, you know, a four one vote implies that the board really is in one place. And that's the voice of the board. And a three two is a split. And in my opinion, it just comes down to who writes the minority report and I you know, I as my opinion in the memo was that I think that we can rely on the clerk to do that. And just in terms of getting things done in an appropriate time, but I'm open. Obviously, if you have different opinions, let's let's discuss that.
That sounds fine to me. That's reasonable.
I mean, Sally, you as a clerk.
No, I don't. I don't mind writing it. And and you raised the question. You mentioned that for our first two meetings that I would not be doing the minutes and I am not doing the minutes tonight. Is that correct?
We don't have anything before the Z B A, so there, I mean, the only thing that would be going on. Yes, yeah, and we the next time we have petitions, then maybe that would be a time to 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 start doing them.
Yes.
And I did promise to send you, and I apologize if I haven't, some of the form, the the formats we've used in the past, so.
Yeah, that's okay. I can also find them. But thank you if you. Yeah, that's okay. I can also find them. Um, but thank you if you do send them along. So, um, I'm happy as the clerk. Of the planning board to document, um, the rationale for the majority. And the minority as we, as we would agree that I would do, however we do so, agree.
So, um, so I guess if everyone agrees. Um, I don't, you know, at this point, we, we're going into unknown land as to whether we actually need a motion to do this, but.
Well, yeah, I, I would say, um, that we ask, um, legal in general. I, I wouldn't necessarily vote, vote anything. I think, um, asking them their opinion, uh, on this makes, makes sense. And I don't, again, I don't think a vote needs to occur. Uh, but, um, I would, I would bring this to legal to see if there, this potentially. Has any issues for us about, um, decisions that are denied or approved and whether or not, um. This means anything for.
Okay, that's a good point. So, so what I'll do is I will, um. Draw up what we've discussed in terms of a policy, um, send that to legal, see whether or not, um, they have an issue with it. Then it'll come back to this board so they get a final stamp of approval. And then that will be our formal policy.
Sounds good.
Okay.
That's great. I think in, in the spirit of wanting to hear all voices in the dialogue. With the idea that the majority voice will prevail, but that people whose voices are in a minority. Still deserve to be heard. I think that I like the outcome of this.
Okay, excellent. Um, let me just finish writing an action item.
So you're gonna draft, um, a policy for legal?
Yeah, I will, I will essentially, what we discussed today, I will write up as a policy. Make sure legal looks at it. If they have a problem with it being an official policy or if they have a problem with my language, then they will correct. Okay, that was quick. Thank you very much. Um. Now we are on to spring town meeting articles. And through the miracle of skipping lots of things, we are way ahead of time. Okay, um.
Will we go through the whole thing? Cause I have random thoughts on various things.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we first go through, um, Brian's article, the curb cut? And, uh, then we'll go through the, uh. The planning board report. And then, um, as Brian put it. As Mark Brian pointed out, there are a few, um, other articles we should consider. And then, um, we can come back and we need to, we can do a final vote next Monday evening. If, uh, there's at least one motion that may be coming up that we won't have the language until then. And I'll, I'll talk about that when we get to it. So Brian, why don't you take yours away?
Um, all right. So I just, um, changed a few things in here from our, from our last one. And we did change, um. Thanks to the engineering department, we did get that view, uh, from the street as if you were six inches tall from the curb. Uh, and I'll see, I'll, I'll show you what that means. Um. Uh, so, um, the first title was not changed. Um, this. So this kind of outlines the four major things of what happened in terms of why we're here. So first, back in twenty seventeen, staff requested the standards. To manage the size of these curb cuts, um, as we saw upwards of fifty, fifty-five feet long curb cuts that were, that were constructed. Wider curb cuts are more unsafe for pedestrians and they can also cause drainage issues. Um, so after that, legal council suggested the zoning by law. Was the most appropriate place for these standards. And then we came up with a maximum driveway width at the street line. Uh, in spring of twenty seventeen. Um, but that term street line was actually difficult to interpret based upon different conditions. Due to different types of curbs, different types of streets and different types of sidewalks. So because of that, uh, we decided to. Um, we, to give explicit standards for the total width at that street curb or sidewalk as well as the property line. So that, that's the major difference. Whereas before it was just talked about at the street line. Um, so, um, we are saying that it's twenty feet at the property line and twenty feet at the street line. We're gonna show a, a graphic. Uh, um, that, that speaks to that. Um, but the distance, none of the distances are changing. It's just saying where the twenty feet is measured. Um, same for duplexes and triplexes. For driveways at ten feet, there's no additional regulations. It's still that max of what's at the. Uh, curb line or edge of pavement of twenty. So we haven't really done anything with the, with the ten foot driveways. Um, the other thing that's happening with this, um, this amendment is that we are getting rid of number five. This was put in on the floor of town meeting and is, is basically, uh, unnecessary due to pre-existing non-conforming structures. There's a whole section about pre-existing non-conforming, uh, and this section, uh, uh, was. Um, told, or the legal council suggested that we get rid of the section, section as it is unnecessary. So this is the, the graphic that we came up with, um, at our last meeting that, uh, it's a lot more simple. We're basically putting everything on one graphic. It doesn't matter whether you have curbing here or the edge of pavement here. It, you can do whatever you want within twenty feet. And that, uh, the major difference is that we have here. So this is looking if you're almost like six inches tall. Uh, right at the curb and you're looking down the driveway. Um, so what we're calling the transition points is the point of where it goes from a normal curb. To something different, whether it's a curve or a, what we call those descending curves. You can do whatever you want between these transition points of twenty feet. So this is an example of these descending curves. So at the, at the moment, we have about a, about a, you know, a twenty foot driveway from here to here. But the, but we're actually going to be measuring, this is the transition point. Here's one transition point of the descending curve. And the other point of the descending curve is here. What we're saying is that the distance between these two transition points. Are twenty feet. Um, so we're trying to get rid of, uh, these very long descending curves that are unnecessary. This is an example of a, uh, about a, maybe a twelve foot wide driveway. Um, where, uh, the actual, uh, length at the street is probably close to maybe. Sixteen to eighteen feet. This would be the transition point from here to here. They would be allowed to go to twenty. Which means it'd probably be able to go a little bit wider than this. But these are the two types of curves that we're seeing are these rounded edge curves. And the descending curves. And we're saying no matter what, the point where it changes, where it transitions from there to there is twenty. And from here, the transition points from here to here have to be twenty as well, to keep this main, to maintain this width of a driveway at twenty feet.
And, and I would emphasize that you use the word maximum twenty because not everybody wants twenty.
You certainly don't need it, but yeah, I can, I can stress the, the word maximum. Um, but anyway, this is gonna be, uh, into, you know, like a five, uh, uh. You know, a, a less than a five minute presentation. I'm also recording on Thursday as well. But, um, those are the major points. Um, it's just these, just these slides. Um, I don't know if you, if there are any, I, there's still obviously is time for me to do any edits. Um, or anything else, uh, but I'm trying to keep it under five minutes. That's kind of, um, that's kind of the goal. But, um, any, any questions or comments now, now's the time.
Um, if you go back to slide eight, that three dimensional drawing. It, there's something, I feel like from that transition point. It just doesn't look three dimensional to me for some reason. Or that the line in the, between those transition points should be eliminated because I, that line is confusing to me of what, what that is indicating. If it's like a physical drawing of something, or if it, yeah, that, you know. It doesn't look three dimensional to me. It just looks like, um, like a flat thing that's like with a twist, like a diagonal driveway. I thought, I thought when I first saw the graphic was that this was, uh, something that was not a right turn. It was like a diagonal turn. It just.
Right. This is, yeah.
Yeah, it's weird.
It is a weird perspective. So if, so thi- this is the height, this is the height of the curb. So this is like six inches, six inches. This, this is your, your physique. If you can picture a human walking.
Right. I, I get that. But then I, I get that. But then you, why wouldn't you say six inch curb or just say that, that curb? Yeah, it's, um, I don't know. I, I just think that it could be a stronger graphic, but. I mean, I, I know you guys have worked on it a long time, so.
It's meant, it, what it is meant to do is to guide DPW and the building department when they go out there. You know, this is what they're, this is what they're looking at. We have to, what, what we're doing here, I is defining the transition point. And saying what those, those maxims are. Uh, I do agree with you that I know how this was drawn, so I see it that way. But if you don't have it drawn, we, like in a way, in a way that is. I, 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 I see what you're saying, that it, it can maybe not look three dimensional, even though it's supposed to look three dimensional.
Right. Line that's missing is a diagonal line from the. Left arrow that is labeled transition point. Up to the back, right there to show.
To show a reveal of some kind?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
It, it, it's a, when you're walking along the sidewalk here, you. Have a little bit of a dip down into the driveway and then you dip back up again to the sidewalk. And, and it's just kind of like to, to eachings point, because that line is missing. It, it, it doesn't read as a three dimensional drawing.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's an argument that can be made that I'm hoping we will pick up. That having the sidewalk dip as it goes through a driveway is actually not good. Because the sidewalk should be level and the driveway should accommodate the sidewalk rather than the sidewalk. If that made any sense.
Yeah, it does. Which means that what you, where it says twenty max, ten min opening. You would actually show like a little slope.
Yeah. I mean, I think the problem is we have, um. There's so many different ways that properties hit the street. We would need. And I think what, what Brian's saying i- is, is the clearest is that this diagram is. Mostly designed so that when the DPW or the appropriate officer. Looks at it, they know what it is we're trying to say. And secondarily is what town meetings.
So to that point, did Brian, did you have a chance to ask, um, anybody at DPW and engineering if they know what you're trying to say?
I mean, we, we were telling them what we're, what we're, we were saying that these are transition points and this is what we mean. You know, this is what we mean by transition point here. And he, so I mean, yeah, they're like, okay.
Yeah, so, so, um, Brian Mantor, the engineer, actually drew, drew this. And he reached out to DPW and their response was, thanks for the info.
Good.
So they will, if they have questions, they will come back and say, what the heck do you really mean? And we will say, this is what we really mean. And as long as town meeting. May discuss it and understand it, but as long as it's, as we get the gist of what we want across the town meeting. That's what holds true. So, um, unfortunately, we don't have graphic artists on staff. So, um.
I mean, I could volunteer, I don't know how much time you have to, to clarify this, but I, I mean, I can volunteer to do it, but it's, um. I, does this enter into the zoning code? I mean, it's, it's, it's like an official document.
So right now, um, we barely got it under in, into the deadline in order for this not to be an amendment to get this graphic in. So now it would be an official, like on the floor amendment, if we were to change any, uh, I mean, if we were gonna take a line out.
I think it would be a minor amendment.
It was, yeah, I mean, it would be kind of like nothing, but if we're going to be doing anything that's different than maybe like taking a line out or adding one line. Type of thing, then I, I would just say, no, it is, it is, you know, this is.
Somewhere on this drawing that this is a three dimensional. You know, drawing. Cause it, it, it reads like a two dimensional drawing.
Or we could, yeah, we could shade it some way that to make it seem three dimensional.
Or just say it, like just underscale or, or, or title of this graphic, like it's a three dimensional view from the. Street of the curve or, you know.
So I can, I, um, I, I can certainly say that in the explanation. Um, and then we could probably put that as a change in the by law, or in the, in this graphic. Um, I don't think that's necessary, but if we're gonna start changing the graphic other than saying that's a three D dimension, three dimensional drawing, then I think we would, we need to do something. But all the things you're talking about, I, we can do, like that's a, that's a Scrivener's error. We could, I mean, if it's just saying that it, it reads as a two D drawing. But if we just say three D drawing, then that's not much. Um, but I can certainly mention, but I can certainly mention it in, in, on Thursday when I record the, the five minute presentation. I'll certainly mention that, uh, when I explain this drawing.
And I think each thing is the great, the right word there, perspective.
It is a perspective drawing.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't it, Eting?
Well, it's a, um, I wish Cheryl was. Yes, axon. Yes, axonometric.
Oh, please, let's just call it perspective.
Um, well, I can, yeah, uh. All right.
Or else someone will have to remember how to spell.
Well, if we're gonna use a word that no one's gonna understand, that doesn't make any sense either, right?
Three dimensional or perspective drawing.
Yeah.
I just had one thing I wanted to add, Brian, and I think we can call this done. I think you need to point out that you can get a special permit. If you need to go beyond that. These are maximum, you can always go beyond with a special permit. So people, people have raised that in the past. And just to make sure they, they understand that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So, um, I'll just make a note of that, um, to put in there. Um, okay. Now, sorry, go, go right ahead.
I guess if one of the question, do we anticipate, specifically anticipate specific questions, confusions? Objections?
Um, there's, oh, there, I guarantee there will always, there will always be a few people. Um, that want further clarification, that, that's just, that's normal, um, especially when it has to do with their driveway. Because we, we found this when we went through in twenty seventeen. Um, but, um, if it means anything. No one has reached out to me concerned about this, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember one before and, and, and I just don't wanna step in it, you know?
Um, yeah, no, that, so there, there was a lot of, um, it, it took a while to get what we were trying to get across. And, um, it was simply that like, there's nothing on the books. Once we got across that, hey, there's nothing on the books and someone has a fifty foot curb cut. It's unsafe if you're, if you're just walking on there. It's easier for people to kind of swing in and out of those really wide curb cuts. There, if there's any sightline issues, they're exacerbated by those really wide curb cuts. So, yeah, there's no need to have a, you know, a fifty foot curb cut around across your whole front edge. Like it's.
And this is all for residential, right, Brian?
Correct. So before we always regulated it, um, for, for commercial properties, twenty seventeen, the major chain was that now we're regulating. Residential.
I see.
Yep. Um, let me, um. I have, Diab, your thing in another PDF or unless we're still going on this one.
I, I'm, I'm happy with where it's at.
Okay. Ish, it seems, okay. Uh, yeah, yeah. Um. Oh, all right. Um, Diab, you just tell me, um.
Yeah.
When to go forward.
I think we can, we can just skip right, I mean, we go next one. Yeah. And just a bunch of thanks, um, go on to the next one. Uh, changing the board. Um, next one, please. Okay, these are, and Brian, I hope I captured everything we talked about this morning. Uh, one of the main things that Brian has been doing over the last many months is doing lots of grants and some of the. He's taken the lead on some, he's co-led and some he's been supportive. So, um, there is. A chunk of work, a huge amount of work in some of these. Um, and I, I don't, I think it's a pretty reasonable return on investment in time. Although Brian made this beat that. Um, the one thing I want to make sure of Brian is the regional shuttle pilot program still under review? The one thing I want to make sure of, Brian, is the regional shuttle pilot program still under review?
Yes.
Okay, and that is for, uh, four communities, that is Winchester, Stonem, Woburn and Medford.
Melrose.
Melrose, sorry, Winchester, Stonem, Woburn and Melrose, there wasn't enough room on this slide.
Sure.
Um, so that was a huge amount of work that, that Brian did, so.
No, wait, well, hold up, timeout, that, that regional shuttle pilot program was, that was not a ton, a, a ton of work on that one, just so we're, just so we're clear.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that was, that was not a, the, the, a, a real big, uh, time, uh,
I meant the, I meant the whole.
The regional shuttle, yeah, no, certainly a lot of the last year.
Yeah, the whole, the whole, I mean, a lot of time went into this, into grant activity. And, um, this is, again, one of the things we need to talk about is making sure we track how much time you put into it. So this is yet another, um, data point so that we can say the town really needs a grant. So, um, in any case, we can move on to the next one.
Well, can I, can I just make a comment about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, pump in.
Um, so I don't know what these are. And if Brian has a one sentence statement about what each of these are, and I guess the X means it was denied and the check means we got money.
Yes.
That needs to be stated.
I will be speaking for the slides.
Oh, okay, so if you just say what they are and then, and then to your point about data points, I think not only would it be great to have the town have a grant writer serving various departments, I don't know how they would divvy their time, but I do feel like a lot of the work, Brian, that you get asked to do, and help me understand this if I'm misunderstanding it, is much more related to economic development, um, of, of, um, the businesses in town, and I wish that we had an economic development, um, person partnering with you and engineering and, and, and the grant writer, so that you would have more time to focus on what I think of as more planning type stuff. I, I, I could be wrong about this.
I think the only thing I can say to that is the only two grants that are on this sheet here are micro enterprise grants and then the local rapid recovery grant. These are the only two that were economic, you know, economic development, um, motivated and were simply due to COVID. So I don't think that that was like a normal ask, I guess, from the, from the town of, of me, meaning, meaning that, um, so, yeah, all these other grants were certainly more planning related, but those two were COVID related, the micro enterprise grant for small businesses, and then the local rapid recovery, also not for, for not just small businesses, but for an entire area, um, is, uh, it's actually bigger than the center business district, it's the cultural district, cultural district, yeah.
Right. So I, I guess my point is that as we go forward, talking about budgets and talking about staffing requests and so on, that, as you said, Diab, we use this data to say there's a positive impact to having a grant writer, there's a positive impact to keeping the focus on planning for Brian. Um, I, that's all.
Okay, uh, if there are no more comments on that, let's go to the next, I don't even know what it is anymore. Okay, uh, so we now have a date, so this is just a, uh,
First is spring.
Of North Main Street. Yep, and we now have a date for our summer public forum, June eighth, I'll put that in there when I fix it up.
I still think that's spring, though, I don't know if we can say summer.
Yeah, it's in.
I'm an optimist, but I will say spring, okay.
Yeah, the sun will say, the sun will say differently.
The sun has nothing, the sun has everything to do with it, what am I saying?
Also, it's more than fifty participants, didn't Josh say they had like seventy-five or more?
Yeah, seventy-seven, seventy-seven.
Yeah, yeah, this was written up before I saw the data that Josh gave us.
Yeah.
Which was great, by the, which is great, by the way, his, the day, the stuff that he showed, um,
Yeah.
I thought it was great.
I will update the North Main Street study slide with the latest data.
Are you gonna say what these colors are?
Uh, this was just a generic thing I pulled out of the, uh, the first report, just as a, a graphic to make the slide less boring.
This is GBD two. Two and three.
GBD three.
I, I, I would just put really inobtrusive little labels on it, just so people know.
Okay, I was, I was hoping to go through this slide in like ten seconds, but yes.
No, no, even if it's just, you know, someone looking saying, what is red, what is yellow? Oh, 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 GBD two.
Okay, so let me, no, no, it's a, I take your, it's a good point, I was, um, update North Main Street slide with spring, June eighth, uh, we had sixty something. I, I think it's, the problem with, with, um, Josh's number is it includes people on the planning board. So we should subtract some number from that.
Yeah, it was, so it was, um, it was sixty, it was sixty-eight and then was plus the nine more that was, that were not, um, there at the time. So sixty-eight people came to the forum, if we take out five, you know, you can, you can say sixty participants. And be, you know, you know, it was around sixty or sixty-two, I guess, something like that.
Yeah, so I'll, it's, it's an approximate because.
Yep.
The only other thing I would say is that when you're talking about this slide, to say that, that the participation that this project elicited is the kind of participation we're looking for moving forward, plus more. We want all of our work to be transparent and highly reflective of community input.
Right, so this is actually, yeah.
Great, right, um. This is a tough slide, Diab and I went over this a few times.
Yeah, so we have these new, we no longer have to have super majorities for certain types of zoning changes. Um, I don't know if you had a chance to look through the link that Brian sent about the chapter forty-eight changes. There are far, I, you know, I think it's just easiest to say there are certain things regarding residential housing and affordability, which change the number of required votes. It's, it's too complicated, I think, to put it down to something which is easily understood inside of just a couple minutes. And, um.
Other than to say that, that the, the reason that this law was passed was to make it easier for certain outcomes to be successful.
More housing.
Right, those, right, more housing, and that's the main thing to say, like where you say certain kinds of ordinances, uh, to understand that the housing advocacy community is excited about this law because they believe that they will be more successful in bringing more inclusionary housing projects into communities, is that right?
Well, I think it's more of being able to pass more zoning at the local level that incorporates more density and more multifamily, just more, more units. And the idea is that most of, most of suburban Boston has been reluctant to have a lot more units, it's been traditional single, you know, a whole bunch of single family homes, not, not just Winchester, all, you know, so that's what it's, that's what it's trying to target.
And that we should be happy about this, everybody in town should be happy about this.
I don't know if you can enforce that on people on that drawing.
Happiness?
You can't enforce happiness, that's for sure.
So, so this language is essentially directly from the state's
Right.
guideline. So I didn't want to, I think.
It's a whole conversation, it's a whole conversation in and of itself, like you said, Diab, I mean, it's, it's a lot.
So I, I didn't want to change too much of the language to make sure that I didn't emphasize it incorrectly. Um, so that's why it, it doesn't actually go into the, it has that strange sort of legal ease to it.
That's fine.
Um, and then the next one, if everyone's okay with this one, I, I'm making notes as we go along. So hopefully, when I give my speech that goes along with this, I get them all. The next one is the fact that if you're near an MBTA station, you have to have a multi-housing, multi-family housing within a certain area or distance from the station, plus all of these things. And I believe that our central business district already meets this criteria. That is still maybe the, the last eyes, dots and crosses of I's and T's by legal is still pending, but I think we already have something like.
I, I think, it, it basically, I think that in terms of the, uh, the fifteen units per acre, the question is, we don't, we don't need, necessarily need to write that into the zoning, if the state is saying that we're an MBTA community and the center business district has to have fifteen units per acre, the question is, is, does that mean fifteen units per acre in each project? Or over the course of the whole, you know, I'm sorry, not the course, over the, the, the breadth of the whole center business district? So, um, I, I think, I think that's only the que, that, that's only, uh, uh, it's one lingering question, is that do it, does it need to be fifteen units per acre for each, let's say, new part, new project? Or is it fifteen units per acre for the whole district?
Does legal weigh in?
So there's going to be, there's a lot of these types of very detailed questions that are about like, what if there's only five units instead of six? Like what if there's no affordable component, there's a lot of these other small kind of intricacies of it that legal, that a lot of cities and towns are asking. Legal's coming out, will be coming out with, um, you know, not a cheat sheet of, but more of a guide uh, uh, on how to interpret this, because there's a few different ways, and I guarantee you, there's gonna be some smart people that are gonna try to take advantage of it some, i- i- it somehow, so, so, yeah, so, um, more to come, is assured there.
Brian, your email about, um, the Wedgmeers train station being exempt, why, why is that?
Because we have to, um, that, because that, that did come up and they, they haven't put out a, um, the state has not put out a document on this yet, but they, um, in a forum dealing with the state, they had said that if there's communities that have more than one, or MBTA communities that have more than one station, it is not required to have this type of density at all stations. Only, it's at least one of them.
At least one.
Are very few towns that have multiple stations.
Well, no, I mean, um, the purple line, yes, but like Somerville has, gonna have like two or three stations at least, or.
Well, that's a good question.
But that's, that's a city, we're talking, we're, this is to get more density in the suburbs.
Yeah, and, and Brian, can you, when, an MBTA, is that just rail or is that light rail as well?
Well, light rail is mostly city, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, yeah, this is, um, I don't think there's really, I think anything that's on a light rail is, is more than fifteen units per acre by, by definite, just because, right, it's just, that's what happened.
There's a legal definition of MBTA community and there's fifty-three of them on the list and we are one. And I forget if it includes, um, uh, what we would call, you know, the streetcars, the subways, is it not just?
Yeah, but those, you know, there's only, there's not too many cities that actually have light rail, right? It's Boston, it's Newton, it's Brookline, uh, Alston, Brighton, you know, I mean, there's not a ton, yeah, there's not, yeah. I mean, there's, you can probably name all of them pretty easily, um, maybe there's twenty of them, and I bet you, yeah, so.
I, I, I have a question about the density, because I was really intrigued by this thing that Diab sent out, and obviously you can't see it on the screen, but this is a close up of this map that shows Winchester here with this color coding showing that we're pretty much across the whole town, as far as I can tell, below nine dwelling units per acre in the whole town, and, and this is that MEPC, MAPC, or Data Common.
Yeah.
Oh, it is the MEPC.
Yeah, no, that sounds about right, and it would just, it would have to be fifteen just within, you know, a half a mile of, of the Winchester Center, uh, station.
Right, and so it is a zoning change, it is something that we have to do, right?
I don't think so.
It's, it's something, yeah.
I think our, I think our center business, I think the center business district accounts for that, it's a question of whether or not that's large enough, um.
So we might have to.
Yeah, as of right now, there is nothing we need to do, that is legal stance for sure, at the mo, at the moment, that, that, that's, I'm, we're clear on that. And as it go, as, as cities and towns go around Massachusetts, we, worse, you know, there's three hundred and fifty-one, we're forty-something for density. So we are not, you know, we, we are actually a fairly dense community when compared to most of the state. And not many people in Winchester know that we're, we're top fifty for density. Um, but we got a lot of houses in, in seven square miles.
I mean, I thi, I think the takeaway for this, at least for town meeting, is that, um, this, the, in, the understanding of these new, of this new law is still evolving. And that because it's, we're dealing with the CBD, which is may meet, it may, we, we're just waiting on legal to tell us exactly what we might need to change on the zoning.
Okay.
And that we're pretty sure that Wedgmeere is, will, the area around Wedgmeere will not be. That's what I think most people in town meeting will be concerned about, is what happens if.
I would say maybe not on the slide, but I would say, yeah, we're right now, you know, at this time, legal has said we do not need to change any zoning, we don't, not need to change any zoning to comply with this at this time. I would say, that's a one sentence, uh, and just to get that out there, because this, this is going to, people are gonna ask questions, because it, it is, you know, it's a cha, it's a pretty big change for.
I mean, I, I think I would leave that to just, to what I'm saying about it.
Yep, so, yep, all right, let's keep, let's try to keep moving.
One, one really quick question, would John Serbeer want to speak to this law in any way, because it's about housing?
If he, I mean, the Housing Partnership Board certainly.
I don't know if they have a report or not.
I don't know if they have a report, but it would be a separate, this is important enough that he may decide to speak on it. But I don't know that he would go in any more detail either.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
He doesn't have the benefit of speaking to town council, like we could, at least not on this. So the next part of this, as sort of a segue, is to look at, and this is the part where this was actually much longer and went into more detail and I threw most of it out, was to look at, you know, what sort of, we have an over, we have a over representation of large homes and under representation of small homes that has an effect on what people can afford and what kind of people are in the community. So, um, these data all came from the MAPC, and what I want to talk about here is that we are a community with very large homes. And as we go to the next slides, I want to bring up the fact that the majority of these homes are not occupied by families with children. Um, they are occupied by, you know, adults who are, essentially the head of household is over fifty-five, um, that's in a slide I removed. And then I think the next slide is, um, I forgot, goes into the affordability of, um, this is going into the fact that we know there is a substantial number of people in Winchester who are cost burdened. Um, we found that out through the, um, the, the research going into the housing production plan, that we are in town at least twenty percent of all people, yeah, so this is on the, so these slides come from, from the western region, which met, which Winchester's been pushed into. So it's not indicative of Winchester per se, but as you can see, it's pretty, if you look at the north and south regions, these are, do not include, um, for instance, Cambridge or Somerville or Boston. So they're outside of that core tight metro Boston area, so they're more like north shore, south, south shore and west, and Winchester and to the west is essentially west.
But this, these are, um, you should say that these are metro, these are metro west, metro.
Metro, metro, metro.
Not, not.
Good thing to add.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have to label that, but when you say that, you're talking about metro west here, the other comparable communities like Lexington, Belmont, yeah.
Could you go back a slide, I can't remember if I put in a, okay, I did put on one of the slides, Met, Winchester's in the metro west region.
Yeah.
I could have hit that on each slide.
I'm having a hard time absorbing it, at the pace of town meeting, which is faster than what we're doing now, um, the, the, the salient points of each of these graphics, so.
Well, um, the salient point is what I'm trying to lead up to, and maybe it's not obvious from just looking at the slides, is if we could go to, let's just go to the next slides and maybe then at least get an idea of what I'm hoping to get to, um, which is building up to a discussion of cost burdening, and then the next slide, which is listing all of the findings from these data, and then bringing it forward into a approach we can use. which would lead us to an improvement on some of it.
Yep, I, I wonder if you don't, you, you shouldn't bury the lead like that and just, you know, bring this to the forefront before you present it and use those graphics as supporting points.
Yeah, I like what you just said, Yeching.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
Yeah, just, just get to the point in the beginning and just say that Winchester is getting unaffordable. Um, and, you know, there's a housing disparity and so, and then these are the graphics that's supporting.
So, so maybe start, maybe here, so slide twelve, maybe we start with slide twelve. Right, essentially, this is, this is the thing, if we start with this and then we have the other.
Well then, right, so.
How does that work, DAB?
I mean, it, it's, the, 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 the detail-oriented scientist than me always wants to have the conclusions after the data. Certainly understand from a marketing perspective, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, this is definitely a marketing exercise. And, and if, and if your goal is to market further conversation and, and zoning laws to encourage ADUs and your methodology is to make these statements, you might hold off on the ADU sentence.
Yeah, the ADU is such a jump in conclusion.
Well, it's, it's also a, a trigger topic for some people. So if you just said Winchester's a gated, economically gated, houses are beyond the reach, many Winchesters are barely hanging on reservoir of empty bedrooms, decreased residential rental opportunities. And then you go into your graphs, which show the economic and the use of these houses. And, and then, I mean, I think to a conversation, DAB, that you and I had about, what would the strategies be for encouraging changes in zoning that would, that would approve ADUs or allow them? These are supporting arguments, but I don't want to like walk into it too fast such that we allow people just to step on it and say, I'm not listening to this, you know, I'm, I'm not making myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I have to admit, I originally did have a less obvious statement, but it was too vague. It was sort of like, maybe we can do something.
Right, right, but then you could, in the ADU introduction, instead of just saying ADU is the answer, be like, well, these are, these are our problems, right, representing you the questions. And here are some ways that we can address that, ADUs, you know, smaller lot sizes, smaller, you know, frontage, more, more density. And just list them as like possible scenarios, right? Are you, like, trying to push town meeting to ADUs already, right? I feel like it would be an introduction to some of the solutions that people have done to address housing costs.
Yeah.
It's like previewing it.
It's previewing it, and so my concern is that, and I, I, I completely agree with you, Yeching. My concern is that some of those other solutions are even less viable than ADUs.
So.
ADUs are like the, the easiest thing to get through town meeting.
It's like the gateway drug. I, I totally agree. It's, um, it's the easiest thing for people to start to accept. And then maybe they'll, they'll realize that density isn't, isn't such a bad thing and it's short than three, four families.
Right.
I, I, but then even this argument, even this slide is trying, is getting into this like, um, you know, pre, positioning it into a political, like a kind of a reactionary stand. It is, it has a little bit of like already a bias of like, you know, gated community is already like a, a very loaded term. People are going to say, we don't have gates, like, what, what are you talking about, right? Just more like, uh, an econ, Winchester is, has, is, it's, housing costs are high. I think that, that would be like a fact that most people would accept, right?
And you would say why? It's because of proximity and perceived value of schools and quality of architecture and quality of, of, of life.
Yeah.
And.
And then I, even the, even these sentences, like houses are way beyond the reach of households, like it, it almost complete, becomes like an opinionated thing, whereas if you just said, you know, they're, they're way beyond even that's like, that tone.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is.
I totally agree with your arguments, DAB, but I'm just saying like to, to make it more acceptable to town meeting. It might need to just be more factual.
Then there's, there's a, I, you know, I agree. There's a, there's a frustration because, you know, we've gone to town meeting in the past and we've had these wonderful plots, which, and these are years old, so they're already out of date, which show that only fourteen percent of people in town can actually afford the median valued home. And this was back when the median valued home was seven fifty.
Right.
Yeah, now it's one point two.
Now it's one point two, so I, in my mind, there's a point where you have to say, this is really bad and your language has to reflect the intensity of. And so I, I understand what you're saying, and so I, I think there's an, I'm trying to, and, and maybe I'm just not doing this well. There, I need, I want to bring about an immediacy of the problem.
Okay.
Because it's been kicked around for so long and the planning board has never really said, this is something we are going to dice headfirst into.
Yeah, we're going to pick it on.
Yeah, because there's always been a concern of what will town meeting do to it? Will this, if we, if we lose a town meeting, is this going to set it back? You, there's a limit, depending upon how kind of meeting rejects it, there's a limitation of how soon you can bring it back. So there are, I can, you know, part of me says that if, if we're not ready for, I mean, everyone in town meeting knows we have, we're an incredibly expensive town to live in. So I would almost say that if we're not ready to jump into this, then maybe I should pull this whole section. Because it may, if, if, if there isn't a plan of what to do, then maybe this is premature.
That might be the case because I think there's actually several strategies that, that we could present, you know, you make the problem, well, first you start with your principles. We as a town believe that, and you say, let's agree that we, we, we believe these things about affordability and openness of community, and we make those statements, and then we say, the fact of the matter is lack of affordability, et cetera, and the number of cost burdened homes and so on. And from there you say, here are solutions. And one of them is ADUs, another solution that I wanted to put on the table is this question of subdividing very large residences into two or three small or more affordable residences. I know some town, some houses in town were built that way in the beginning and others, I don't know that there's a lot of precedent for converting large, single-family homes to two or three condominium properties to allow more families to afford to live here. That would be another option.
Right, more, um, a, a more taste, like, what, what am I saying? Like, something that's a little bit softer for people to start to accept. Because I, the temperature that I feel like, you know, in, in this planning war is that we all, many, I, I'm assuming many of us want to do this. We, it's a problem, that's why we're here. But the temperature round, I feel like is still tepid and like, you know, people can complain about parking and, and, you know, just, you know, use all the euphemisms about like not wanting this to happen because, you know, it's going to cause maybe more crime or whatever it is, right? Like some, some really awful things I think people are saying about NIMBY. But, um, I wonder if, because we don't get to vote on it, in town meeting does, it's a lot of political, you know, talking to town meeting members specifically and trying to get people on board one-on-one and in small groups until we know that like it, it's ready and we, we push it at town meeting. And I think that that would take a lot of groundwork.
Like a camp.
Yeah.
So what, so, let's just, let's just toss this all out. Because it, so the question is, and, and I apologize that you folks got dragged into this so late in the game.
Well.
Hopefully for fall, we'll have a lot, you'll, you'll be part of the process earlier. So what is the message that we want to put out for this, for this particular town meeting?
So, so I, I think that a big message that for this town meeting is change is coming, change is here. And this is the amount of projects that are either in pre-application discussions or are out there that we're aware of, or people that are coming back with a second round of projects. Change is happening and we can't ignore it. We should meet it and address it in a way that puts in, you know, protects the things that we all agree that we want to protect, right? I think there's a certain group of, of members of our community who don't want anything to change and they don't want any laws that would allow change. They like it the way it is. The fact of the matter is that the world, socio-economically, politically, environmentally, is changing around us and you can't just live in a bubble. And, and so it's our job as a planning board to anticipate that and to guide the town into embracing change that serves our, our larger goals and vision and mission, like we have the 2030 plan. So like what Yeching said, don't just jump into the solutions until we've warmed up the community to the notion that change is here. We have to understand what it looks like and what we want it to look like when it's done. I, I'm not saying it well, I'm sorry.
No, you're saying.
I think that the master plan, I, yeah, it's great, Sally. I think the, the master plan says that very well, that we, in next ten years, or now, next nine years, this is what we like to see for housing. We like to see more affordability, we like to see, you know, a demographic that's, that's, that are able to stay here, a class, you know, diversity. And use that as like the, the, the thing to fall back on, like this is the reason why we did it. Because our community agreed that these are our values. And so here are some of the ways that we can get there, right? I mean, isn't that what the document is for? So just sort of like, almost push the blame on them. I, I, not, you know, to, to make it so that like this was a communal idea.
I, I agree completely. Town meeting has been told this for years and.
But now it's time to act on it. They've all agreed, these are our values, like Yeching said.
But, but if we're going to say it's time to act on it, then I think we need language to say, we are going to act. And that's the part where I'm having a difficulty. And, and I think town meeting is, they've heard, you know, they know there are lots of things going on in town. We've talked about affordable housing and inclusive zoning. We brought up in past town meetings, you know, the number of inclusive, of units, affordable units in each of the upcoming developments. So this is all sort of the, the standard route, as it were. So that's kind of what they expect. And so if we are going to move on to the next phase, then I think we need to take on, not this language obviously, but some language indicating that we are going to be moving forward. And, and so we can certainly say that, you know, we're moving forward based on the master plan. But I think that we need to, we need to give some indication that this is imminent, rather than just something that may happen in two or three years. And then it'll be forgotten because it seems like.
Well, it is imminent.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
When I did my little list to properties and areas and I had like eighteen projects that are like swirling around like, like swarming bees, right?
Yeah, but none of these, to be, I started to interrupt Sally, but none of these projects is going to fix our problem.
Um, well.
Until we start re, until we start putting some sort of overlay zoning to increase density in certain areas. Until, we need, according to the Housing Production Plan, we need seven hundred units.
That's the lead, right there. People need to understand that the Housing Production Plan calls for an addition of seven hundred of affordable units in this town. Those affordable units reflect a town-wide commitment that emerged in our 2030 master plan to diversify, socio-economically diversify Winchester. And one way to do that is with housing mix. And there's a number of really important projects coming up that begin to address housing mix. But we have more work to do. We have work to do with zoning, we have work to do, well, with, using zoning, work to incorporate other strategies for diversifying housing stock options in our town. If you like it the way it is, I'm really glad. We don't have to destroy what we have to expand what we have.
I like what you just said. I think that's, that's, that's a good way of doing it.
So like, if I just look at this list, okay, like, all right, so the Mahoney's land, that could end up being a solution to that, who knows? It's difficult to imagine right now. Holton Street might be, the Forest Circle Project doesn't have a lot of promise to it. I'm looking at the bigger ones, but well, nine, ten main, the, the seven thirty-five main. So, I mean, lots of places in town where, it, it, and those are physical properties as opposed to zoning that would permit existing properties to expand their habitability by more people.
Right, but I mean, I, I, I'm going to have to play devil's advocate here. None of these new developments will actually decrease our need for affordable housing at the most, maybe the River Street and the Cambridge Street will. But they're coming in at ten or fifteen percent affordability and we need them to come in at twenty-five or thirty. And the only ones that are doing that right now are the fortyBs. And even then, the seven hundred affordable units are actually true affordable units, not the fake ones that the SHI.
Yeah, that you get credit for a hundred percent of the units that are.
We need seven hundred actual units.
Now, DAB, wait, no, hold on, hold on there, gonna have to. So we have about, now, we, we have about close to eight thousand housing units. Right now, a close to eight thousand. So, and we would need eight hundred on the SHI. So DAB, when you were quoting seven hundred, that we need seven hundred actual units, it's, no, we need seven hundred on the SHI. So we do count all of the ones that are, if it's twenty-five percent affordable and it's rental, we do count all of them. And it's with on the SHI, nobody counts, even though they should. Nobody counts how many true affordable units do you have in town? It's what's on the SHI, and there are numbers that are on the HSI that are clearly not affordable. They just get counted in because they're rental.
Because they're rental, right. And so that's why DAB was saying real affordable.
Well, he was saying we need seven hundred real, and I'm saying that, that's not true. We don't need seven hundred real affordable units.
Oh, to meet state mandate.
Right, we need, we need units on the SHI.
Okay.
Oh, I agree. I'm not talking about state mandated. I agree. If all we're worried about are, is safe harbor and fortyBs, then we can, you know, we can build forty units a year and we'll be out of safe harbor. But if we're building forty units a year, it doesn't get us where we need to be. This is based on, the seven hundred units is based on the twenty percent of people in town who are housing cost burdened.
Oh, I thought you were talking based on the ten percent of, I say, ten percent of the unit.
No, 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 sorry, sorry. Yeah, no, this is based on, on the number of housing cost burdened people in town.
Right, so there's, there's two, there are two things here. There's NOAA, which is the naturally occurring affordable housing, which is our nice, small houses. And this is where your slide comes in about preserving smaller homes in town. It's difficult to do when a small home sits on an incredibly valuable piece of land. So you need creative strategies for preserving smaller homes. I don't know what those are. That was one.
Yeah.
But, so the other point I wanted to make was about four sixteen Cambridge Street. When I was sitting in on a zoning board of appeals meeting the other day, I understood from Fritz von Maring's presentation to the ZBA that the people that. that the people that had appealed 416 have come to an amicable agreement and 416 can proceed. Brian, so that needs, slides needs to be corrected.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. That was.
Oh, yeah, they they were just in, yeah, I I there was some type of memorandum of understanding between the ledges and the applicant. I have not seen that document, but.
We do need to see that.
Yeah.
Well, I will, I will just since we, if it's not out in public so that we can actually see it, I will say something along the lines of.
I think I think kind of, I think the same update for 19 to 35 version, you can say construction to commence this year.
With a question mark.
Yeah, I mean, both of both of these should be this year. That is, that is the timeline. As they, I would just say the, I would, it's not under appeal anymore. They've come to an agreement. We don't know all the details of that agreement at all. I would say with a safe bet, construction is to commence this year for both of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I I see that. I'm sorry. I I feel the urgency that you have to create affordable housing and that one of the greatest solutions would be to start with ADUs. And I, from what I've like been talking to people about, like even during the campaign, like people who whom I thought might be really reluctant to change, like I think the ADU aspect of it, like their their children can move in or like their, you know, their that they can move into small units and their children could have their house. Those those kinds of ideas are so popular, like people, people are really excited about that. And I think that just you can sell it that way. I'm sell it. I'm sorry, just use like salespeople terms, but you can you can definitely use that pot, that excitement about that. I think there is enthusiasm about and and to you know, talk about that and massage it and like, you know, make it really palatable. And that that could really, really make a dent.
I I just want to say one thing about ADUs is that ADUs are almost never deed restricted. So ADUs could potentially help our naturally occurring affordable, like, you know, not deed restricted, but just just so, because many people have come up, well, how, first of all, why aren't ADUs deed restricted? And the idea is that it would have to be simply because the owner wants to provide a, you know, a deed restricted unit, meaning they're taking, they're taking money out of their own pocket to deed restrict that house. So it just, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. So that's why, so that's why. Yeah, in terms of accessory dwelling units, they just don't, they don't get deed restricted.
Right, but but they do fall into that other category of lowercase affordable housing and.
Because you take people out of the housing market, you know, like the the child can now, you know, stay in that barn instead of buying us $800,000 condo and that frees up, you know, one condo for a thing. It just like gets gets the bottleneck, you know?
No, of course. I just want to be very clear that that those that accessory dwelling units, the chance of us seeing any ADUs on the subsidized housing index are like virtually different.
No, no, that wouldn't, but it would in like economic terms, I think, help housing costs come down.
Agreed.
So that's really interesting. So there's this whole notion of we have to do what the state needs us to do because we are one of the 351 cities and towns and this is a law. And then there's the, we we would like to do what we came up with, we've said was our goal and our aspiration in our 2030 master plan, which was to make the town a more affordable, to a more socioeconomically diverse community of people. It's really unfair that only very rich people can move here anymore, right? So one conversation is about deed restricted properties. And the other conversation is about creating smaller properties.
Creating moderate, creating moderately priced housing.
Yeah.
Yes.
That is, that is what, yeah.
Yeah. And and to be honest, I I see that as a division between what the select board is interested in and what the planning board is interested in. Because I think the planning board is, has the long term view of creating that town. And the select board may have to deal with the immediacies of 40B legislation and the S H I. But I think the planning board has to be driven by the the need of the people rather than the need of the.
What was your last word? The need of the state? Yeah, you went out. I just missed the last word.
Yeah, just just the fact they've, I mean, and to be honest, you know, 40B was written from they made it up because no one else had actually done anything like that. Ellen Rogers, who's on the Housing Partnership Board, was actually one of the prime authors of the 40B and is a fascinating story. So it's a, but in any case, getting back to this, since it's 2145 and this has been a really great discussion. We.
Do you have time to do a re, do you have a time to show, to do a rerun on this and shoot it off to us?
No.
Or is that not allowed under open meeting?
It's not allowed under open meeting and I don't have time because I have to do, I have to do a presentation for next Wednesday at the Housing Equity Forum on redlining and zoning.
Good.
And I haven't, I haven't written that yet. So what I think is the safest thing to do is to replace, Brian, if you could go right back up to that, I think it's just the one up, is to take all the slides before this one, which had all the data and just scrub them. And simply come up with a slide which talks about the the need for affordable affordable housing, the need or the 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 vision from the master plan for a, Sally, you said it really well, diversity of housing and economic mix. On that, that the planning board is going to be implementing, where the master plan implementation process is starting up and I allude to that later, and that we are going to be pursuing a number of strategies to meet the true needs of the town and of the region, the affordability of the region. And maybe just leave it at that and just say we're actively going to be doing this and, you know.
And and we're going to use the, we're going to use the implementation of the master plan as a vehicle to engage citizens and and reach our goals. It's not just the planning board. The planning board.
Is not, yeah.
And this is a very inclusive and transparent and and creative process that relies on, I mean, we have such smart, insightful people in town. We can tap that knowledge to come to really meaningful solutions. And that sounds so Pollyannaish, I'm sorry.
No, it doesn't. I mean, because to be honest, there are a lot of those people who are sitting on various boards. I mean, you know, in my opinion, everyone should go to the Housing Partnership Board and really understand the depth of the resources.
Absolutely. To my earlier point, that I want more boards involved in more formal advisory roles.
Yeah. So let us, let us, so we're going to scrub all of that. I will rewrite this slide. If we go on to the next two slides, these are just, you know, the big thing that the planning board did do is to move through the 654 Main Street project. And as you may or may not know, a bunch of us from the old instigation of the board just received our first lawsuit today. So it has been appealed by one of the abutters. And so that is now about as much as we can say at the moment, because it's now in legal's hand.
That's big. I don't realize, I didn't know that happened today.
It it's been in the pipeline, but I just got a certified packet and mailed it, so.
Yeah, we we were known at the time of the filing that it was going to be appealed based upon, I mean, they were open about it.
Yeah.
Where is it being appealed? Where does that happen?
And I think it goes to Superior Court, more, yeah, I don't, I don't know. It's either Lang Court, or sorry, it's not Lang Court, it's Housing Court or Superior Court.
Sorry.
It's not Z B A, though. It's beyond that.
No, no.
No, no, we, so, yeah, we were the SPGA, so it goes, it goes to, you can't appeal to Z B A. So it goes to, you know, it goes to either, depending upon it, goes to either Housing Court or Superior Court.
Okay, got it. Very helpful. Thank you.
So that is the new thing on that one. And then the next one is just a very brief discussion that this land has come up and they're looking to sell it and that's about it.
And and can we speak briefly to the fact that some of the development special permitting type vehicles that we have don't apply here because they require 10 acres?
I, we can say that, but in my opinion, it's a little premature.
Okay, I would buy that.
We just don't know what the plans are.
Okay, Brian?
And, you know, I think that's something if someone asks a question about that, then I could bring it in there. But, I mean.
It's good for people to know.
I mean, really, the only, the only thing that you can say here is that, you know, some type of a the only thing that's by right here is some type of a, you know, I don't know exactly how many houses it is, something like five, six or seven single family homes. That's probably, you know, you put some type of a ring road. Just a road that, so it's not a dead end. We wouldn't, we wouldn't do a cul-de-sac like.
Well, the access was promised off of this little street at the top, whatever it's called, Rocky Ledge Terrace.
Yeah, there's Rocky Ledge, Rocky Ledge Terrace. And then there's also, there's a connection here, I think that.
Mahoney's is keeping that land.
Yeah, so it's unclear. It is basically, so the Mahoney's put out and essentially an RFP. So right now, they, and they just received them, you know, by four days ago. So they're combing through all these potential options of how much, what these, what these development, development teams think that they could build there and therefore how much money they're willing to pay, you know, for for the land. But if we want to say that the only, the only real by right option is something like six or seven single family homes with the potential, you know, we're open to talk about a whole bunch of stuff. I don't know how much you want to say that in a report, right? So the, I guess you could say, as of right now, the only by right option is something like six or seven single family homes on a new subdivision road.
That would come before the planning board for approval.
For subdivision, yeah, correct, yeah.
For subdivision, yeah.
Yeah, they would have to put a new road in here. So they would be before the planning board for for that. And then if they're going to do, need anything for the houses, they would be in front of Z B A.
Yeah, I mean, this is zoned, it's zoned agricultural, right?
No. I don't think it's F C I.
Okay.
I think it's, I I, I think it's, I think it's 10. I think it's R D B 10 or potentially R D A 20, but I believe it's R D B 10.
I think it looks like, see, I have my little colorful map in 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 six.
Yeah, you should be able to see Mahoney's pretty easily. And just west of there. And I can get it up, I can get it up.
So I was, you know, this is, I can certainly say by right is single family subdivision and leave it at that.
Yeah, and the other thing I would say is that because it's highly tumultuous tumultuous terrain, it's very likely that the site plan review will be triggered because of changes in grade to achieve objectives. I walked up there and it's really tumultuous.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be one bear of an engineering project.
It's R D, it's R D H 20.
Yeah, that's what I thought I was reading. Thank you, Brian.
So it's, it's, there's not a lot you can do there because 20,000 feet is 20,000 feet.
Unless it gets rezoned because we have objectives to meet with regards to making a more diverse housing stock in the community.
I think that economically, it may be difficult for anyone to make money on that land.
That would be very likely, yes.
Because it's just, there are no utilities there. Nothing is prepared. It's a greenfield. And it's a very difficult, as you point out, it's not an easy place to develop. But so I, I, you know, I think there's enough uncertainty in where this is going that just keeping it, just letting people know that this is happening.
Know, right.
I mean, it's unusual that we have five acres of land that pop up out of nowhere, so. Any case, so these are the plans that I I hope are not controversial.
Bringing in, right?
We are asking for 15K in our budget to do a Holton Street study area, so we definitely have to say that we're going to do it. And I think that covers it.
So on the Holton Street one, I don't actually know. And so maybe other people in town meeting would be interested to know from the master plan what the goals are for that. And on the implementation committee, that the goal would be that it would be highly inclusive and reach across all aspects of our community because the master plan action items reach across all aspects of our community.
The whole, that that area based upon the master plan was pegged for as an opportunity zone. And that is for further study. We were thinking more of commercial or technology or robotics, something like that with housing being subservient in that location. This is just the standard argument of, yes, we do want to put more units in town. However, that's not near a lot of, it's not near a lot of transit. It's not not near a lot of other amenities and services. And the idea that we want to change that tax, right now, our taxes are 95 and a half percent from residential properties. And to try to offset that with a little bit more, the three areas for commercial air, for commercial expansion or center business district, the G B D two and three. But really, it's on Holton Street. So that is kind of the one, like, that's kind of the commercial area. I think you want high end commercial, like I said, more like lab space, robotics, life sciences, that type of thing, with with obviously some housing, but not, we don't want to build a city out there. That's not, that's not the point. The point isn't to put a whole bunch of units there. It's to have some very interesting, why, you know, all these life sciences buildings are in Cambridge and Somerville with people that are live in Winchester. They're like, why, why not have a something small like that here in Winchester? There's, there's an old industrial zone that's waiting for that, so.
Is that, is that this, this, you can't see the map, but
Yep.
It's it's up in here, this spot?
Yep, it's right on the borderline. So the whole, the actual 43 Holton Street that was talked about in this previous one is actually the building spans Winchester and into, yeah, you can see a building maybe that spans right, that's, that's, that's the 43 Holton Street.
Yeah, it's really confusing because it straddles the line, like, just like Whole Foods, yeah.
It's, it's, it's really a horrible place for housing just because it's out in the middle of nowhere. The other, the other salient point is that a, a real estate, I don't know what to call them, but they they purchased the building for $20 million essentially last.
Yeah, I saw that on another slide.
Yeah.
That's an awful lot of money to pay for something.
I did. I actually was able to talk with Oliver Street Capital.
Excellent.
And they are, they specifically kind of look for industrial properties and house them, like they have a whole bunch of long term leases there. Like they're, they don't really have any plans anytime soon and would be happy to talk to us whenever we do study it to lend, you know, their input, but there's, there's certainly no plans. And if you look at their portfolios, they look, they buy industrial type properties and and manage them to to make them cash positive. So that's all the information I have right now, but there's certainly no plans for a large housing development or anything like that from them.
And is there zoning changes that we would do?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's almost 10 o'clock.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
This is the last, this is the last, so whatever, that's the Holton Street area in terms of why why we would be studying that. It's a very key area that is severely underused for for our purpose, for for our purposes. And it's really that commercial, that commercial point. Is there anything else on on this slide, Dia, that you wanted to talk about?
I'm, I think it's.
I I think these four points are great. I think that 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 these are, this is a great 18 months for us to look towards. Yeah, I think there's enough work to see, these four things are big, you know, yeah, just that. All right. In that case, oh, I think these are the resources that you put these codes on.
Yep. So I think that's it. I think I have, I I understand where the board wants to go with that. So I, we will, I think that for the fall, our fall. that for the fall, our fall report, we, hopefully, we will start working on this a lot earlier and with the entire board working together, we'll get a, a more powerful statement. Um, I think we're, we, do we have meeting minutes? We do have one meeting minute that I think we can get out of the way if everyone can hang on for a couple of minutes. Um, I think it's the April sixth one, did I get that right?
For, yeah, it's just the April sixth one, because the other ones, um, yeah, they were unnecessary to vote on because we don't have, uh, the majority of the, that board, so it made no sense to vote on them.
Right, um, wait, I'm sorry, we don't have the, the April sixth one, so you're saying we can't vote?
No, for the, oh, I was saying that we don't have the March twenty-ninth one because that, it didn't matter, but now, now I'm thinking for the April, the April sixth, I, I, I believe, yeah, the three of you are here, so that, that should be, that should be fine.
We, we have, um, I just remembered, unfortunately, I, we do, we still need to, to think about the other warrant articles that we might want to have an opinion on at town meeting. And, um,
That's certainly, that's certainly more important than the meeting minutes.
Yeah, so the question is, does the board want to spend a few minutes talking about that now? Or do you want to do that next Monday evening?
Yeah, we meet, we, maybe we meet it, yeah, like at six forty-five or set, like I said, we were gonna meet at seven for thirty minutes, but if we have one A N R, that's the only business we have is town meeting and one A N R, if we want to do that in thirty minutes or if we're gonna need forty-five.
So.
I think, I think we should just move, we can just move it to six forty-five and.
Let's do that.
And just, and do that, and Heather will be there and we'll, we'll move forward with, with that. And I think everyone, everyone should be focused and talk about, um, between now and the twenty-sixth to determine what articles you feel are important.
Yeah, I mean, the ones I think that are most interested this board that I've seen are the ones involving, um, the upcoming local development agreement for the water field law, which hopefully will be on the art, on the warrant. Um, there's also the disposition of ten Greenwood, did I get that wrong again?
Twenty, uh, it's twenty, um, Glenwood.
Twenty Glenwood?
I believe, yeah.
And then there is also what the Climate Action Advisory Committee is possibly going to do a motion to amend the budget to add back in a sustainability directive for town hall. And they have asked the planning board to consider supporting that. And they will have the language for that motion by next Monday. So that's something we might want to consider. Those are the three that I'm aware of that we should look at. So, um, with that.
That sounds reasonable, yeah.
So why don't we do the meeting minutes, um, and I hope, if, if people have not had a chance to read them, then we can postpone that. But if you have, we can go ahead and vote those in.
I read them.
And I did not, I'm sorry.
Um, well, then why don't we, um.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
We'll just shift it.
We'll just shift it, um, and what we might do is move it to the beginning of our agenda next time so that it does not languish.
All right, I will make a note to everyone that we will start, uh, begrudgingly at six forty-five, um, instead of seven, so that we can, um, do one A N R and also talk about all of our positions related to any other articles, because that is gonna take longer than ten minutes. You know, I mean, it's just, it will, so that, that, I think we're gonna need that thirty to forty-five minutes to do that.
Yes, good.
Excellent, and, uh, if we were meeting in person, then I would promise you all ice cream for an early.
Well, I think, I think how it works is we'll, we'll meet from six forty-five to seven twenty and then break and do whatever we need to do and then come to town meeting at seven thirty, just so we can, you know. Anyway, that'll be fun, um, okay, I'm all set.
Okey-dokey, um, so at the, whatever time it is.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Please, yeah, do, are you making that motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Excellent, roll call, please, Sally.
Aye.
Yi Ching.
Aye.
Darius, aye, we adjourn three zero one, Hannah absent. Uh, thank you very much, um, Nancy, for your notes, thank you to WinCam for recording and broadcasting us. Thank you to all the citizens, the residents of Winchester, um, for tuning in, and we will see you next Monday evening, on the twenty-sixth.
Joe. Bye.